You're watching KRQE News 13. It is deja vu for lawmakers here back in Santa Fe this morning. For the fifth time in less than four years, the New Mexico House and Senate and the governor, they are all back, back in the roundhouse. As you see there, lawmakers, this from a prior session, but lawmakers gathered again to talk all about money this time for another special session. New Mexicans could be getting cash payments worth either $500 to $1,000 depending on how you file taxes. It's also a do-over today for a bill that the governor, Michelle Lujan-Greisham, vetoed to the dismay of a lot of lawmakers. This morning, we're breaking it all down to help you understand what's ahead and why. Thank you for joining us here on KRQE.com here this morning. We appreciate you being here. This is our special live coverage of the latest special session for New Mexico lawmakers. I'm Chris McKee here in the News 13 digital studio. And again, we are trying to break down what is going on here. It is a special session, but we do expect a lot of debate all centered to these cash payments. I couldn't do this alone, of course, and that's why I want to bring in our special guest here as well, Mr. Curtis Sagara. He joins us here live in the News 13 digital studio. Curtis, you of course are KRQE.com's investigative data, digital data reporter, or rather investigative data reporter.
Do a lot of things.
You do do a lot of things around here and certainly quite a bit when it comes to covering the legislative session, which you did have your hand in here. First of all, I want to say thanks for being here, but also just to ask you, how did you cover the legislative session here this last year? Give us just a little bit of breakdown. What were people seeing online and familiarize ourselves with what you did?
Sure. Well, thanks for having me, Chris. It's always a pleasure, always good to talk about the legislature. You know, they were busy this year. About a month ago was the regular session. It was a short session, so it was about 30 days, but they covered a lot of topics. You know, there was a lot of discussion, debate, and even bills about education, getting more pay for teachers. There was stuff about public safety. You know, a lot of people in the community feel like Albuquerque and other places around New Mexico had a crime problem. So there was a lot of legislative actions focused on that. Some things made it through, some things didn't. So really, I was just keeping track of everything that was being talked about up in Santa Fe and ultimately just trying to break it down for our fellow citizens to understand what topics the lawmakers really considered important, what got funding. Of course, they passed the big state budget, billions of dollars worth of fundings for government agencies across the state, things that support all sorts of programs from public health, education, public safety across New Mexico. So they covered all of that in the regular session again about a month ago. But as you mentioned, we're back here today for a special look at a couple of special topics in this special session.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of money topics as we'll get to and kind of explain a little bit more here. Just if you have never joined us here on KRQE.com for one of these live streams, what we're doing here is essentially just having a conversation about some of the things that we've covered, what you need to know going into this session, what you should expect a little bit more today, hearing some of the context. We'll have some, some of the clips, video clips of interviews and soundbites from lawmakers leading up to this because it is certainly a unique situation that we're entering in here. In short, this is a special session that it seems the governor called to avert what was likely to be an extraordinary session. So we will get to that. But if you do have any questions or comments for us, you can always tweet us. You can see Curtis' hashtag down there. It says, hey Curtis, I just realized that my own hashtag is missing, but I'll get that up here on screen shortly. So, but you can always tweet us, at us, hey Curtis, hey Chris during this conversation. Ask us your questions. We'll try to tackle them as best as we can. Sometimes we don't always have the answer. Sometimes questions become more speculative and we can do our best to, I guess, lend some answers toward maybe what lawmakers have already suggested.
And of course, it's worth being said that the lawmakers are just kind of meeting now. We don't know exactly what's going to happen. So, you know, we're going to be talking about what we expect, what lawmakers have already signaled is likely to come, but things could change throughout the day, but we'll give our best look at what we know.
Absolutely. Well, I am just working on getting these hashtags up here, Curtis. So I left you hanging on screen here just a little bit.
No, you're fine.
But you can see, hey Chris, hey Curtis down there. We encourage you to be a part of the conversation and we'll try to do the best we can to keep an eye out for your comments and then also certainly answer what we can. So I should also note that today, we do have a crew up in Santa Fe at the roundhouse. What you're getting a look at and behind you right now is just the live, or I should say, recorded pictures from some prior sessions of lawmakers gathered there in the roundhouse. But we do have a crew headed on the way and as we know, lawmakers are expected to begin this morning at about nine o'clock. A lot of times, these things are streamed virtually as well, and I am keeping my eye on that in one of my monitors here to my left. And so far, no live stream of the session from the lawmakers website is actually available.
Yes.
But that's okay.
Sessions usually start around noon, but this special session, they wanted to start a bit early. Like you said, Chris, we are expecting around nine o'clock, stuff to start happening and we'll get into it, but that's more or less because people want to get done with this special session quickly. There's a lot of kind of agreement already happening even before the session started. So it sounds like it's going to be a short one in terms of special sessions. But yeah, starting a little early, hopefully to get done a little early.
Yeah. And the other thing I wanted to outline is just that, you know, with this special session, we wanted to break down kind of some of the immediate things of just sort of how this is going to work. So made this quick graphic called essentially, I guess, why we're here is maybe the best way to calculate this one. So the session is supposed to begin around nine o'clock. We do expect this to be one day only, right? Curtis, you, you talked a little bit about that already, that lawmakers want to be in and out quickly, right?
Yeah, I mean, sessions, special sessions can range anywhere from a day to multiple days. It really depends how quickly they work through the topics that the governor asked them to work through. And we've been hearing that they already have some agreement, it seems like, on some of these topics that they'll discuss today. So the talk of the town is that it's going to be relatively short and hopefully they'll get through later tonight, you know, seven. Hopefully they don't have to go till midnight because I know the lawmakers up in Santa Fe don't want to stay out that late. They want to get home safely before, before the roads start getting too dark, but they're hoping to get up through pretty quickly.
And I think, I think the other thing to note here is the longer the session goes on, the more money that has to be put into what they call the feed bill to help run the session, the more just sort of opens up the bitterness, I guess you could say, of having to be back already. I know I did speak to a few lawmakers leading up to this and many of them expressed that it was, or rather, I should say, a few of them expressed, not many of them, a few of them expressed that this was getting back so quickly, it was kind of exhausting for them mentally because obviously there's a lot of work that goes in behind the scenes to this stuff.
And a lot of work for the staff up at the roundhouse as well. I mean, the people that have to print out all the bills, handle all the votes, tally it all up. I mean, that's all staff that they have to pay in that feed bill that you were talking about. So that feed bill will just be one of likely three bills that will be introduced throughout this special session. That feed bill isn't really a topic of debate. It's just to say, here's money we need to get this done. It's the other two bills that they'll introduce that will be central to the session and probably the topic of a little more debate. Do you want to talk about those, Chris?
Yeah, the two topics that are going to be central to this legislative session, cash payments and the junior bill. We will get to a little bit more on both of these, but really just to say, it's, it's pretty narrowly tailored to those things. The junior bill, very quickly before we get more into it, was a $50 million spending bill that the governor vetoed. There was a lot of backlash from lawmakers related to that. So there's a redo essentially today. This is supposedly a different junior bill to some degree, but we're not entirely sure exactly how different it is going to be. So that's the number one topic we'll start with, but also we do want to get to a little bit later, the cash payments. There was some Democratic leadership discussing this yesterday. Their proposal essentially is going to be 500 and $1,000 cash payments depending on how you file your taxes. And again, we'll get to a lot of those other details in just a bit here. But before we do that, the idea is to finish up tonight, as, as we had already mentioned here a little bit, the longer this goes, the more money it has to take. And I don't think that lawmakers, having been to now the second special session right after our regular session now, and I mean that two years running. Last year, it was for cannabis. This year, it's for this, this, these money-related matters. There is a feeling here from lawmakers like, we just got to get this done and get out of here for sure. So let's also, Curtis, let's talk a little bit about the, the types of sessions that we're here because I did talk about this just moments ago and essentially it's the, the fact that we're here because lawmakers essentially threatens to call an extraordinary session, which is different than a regular session and a special session. So let's just put a graphic up here on screen and Curtis, can you run through the three types of sessions here real quickly?
Let's start at the most simple level. What is a session? It's just when the lawmakers are at the roundhouse, working on bills, trying to get new laws through or changes to the constitution, that sort of thing. So it's when they're in session, doing their work. So a regular session is the, the larger session where a lot of work does happen. Again, that was about a month ago this year, lasted about 30 days because it was a shorter session. Some go as long as 60, but they did a lot of stuff, covered a lot of topics and appropriated a lot of money, I mean billions of dollars. And then they finished, they said, we're done, we did what we want to do. Now it's up to the governor to ratify or sign the different bills that they passed. Well, she actually vetoed a few of the bills and that started some discussion. Some lawmakers weren't exactly sure why she vetoed some of the bills, particularly the spending package that you mentioned, Chris. So they considered what is called an extraordinary session and that's when they call themselves together to meet again without the governor's permission. So three fifths of the legislature decide that they want to do that, they can. They don't need too much reason other than that they feel like there's some sort of state of emergency within the state. So that could be this big spending package that was vetoed. They could say, you know, this constitutes an emergency. We want to gather together and rework this to try to get it through. Before that happened, the governor stepped in and said, before you do that, I'm going to call a special session, which again is similar, but it's something that the governor calls. She kind of calls the shots here and can say what they can and can't discuss. If they had done an extraordinary session, it would have been on any topic. They would have the say in what they discuss. So to some extent, the governor stepping in and calling a special session was maybe a smart move for her to be able to say, hey, let's just focus on these topics rather than let the legislators discuss any topic under the sun.
Yeah, it's, I think the important thing to note, it's all about power here. And when the governor is facing a moment where an extraordinary session could be called, that is a challenge to her power as the chief executive of the state. And we know that there are not many times that extraordinary sessions have happened. I think it's literally been once.
Once in recent history, yes. Back in about 2002, it happened, but you know, that was so long ago that as people were talking about this in the last few weeks, a lot of people were unsure exactly how it worked, both here in the newsroom and up at the legislature. I was talking to folks that have been working as legislative staff up there and a lot of them were kind of scratching their heads, wondering exactly what would happen if the legislators decided to come together that way. But didn't happen, so we'll have to wait maybe again in the future.
Yeah, so a lot of this all laid out because of, yeah, the governor facing this extraordinary session, calls a special session. She called that on March 18th, saying it was, quote, "to bring relief to New Mexicans amid rising costs." So, and that certainly is, is stealing the thunder, I think, here of the conflict that maybe came with the junior bill. I want to say that lawmakers are probably trying to leave that behind as just politics now and saying, okay, well, we're at the point where we're going to pass this, this junior budget spending bill that got vetoed that we all got really upset about. But yeah, here's also these cash payments, free money. A lot of people love to hear that just because it's not often that you come upon money that gets just sent directly to you.
There's certainly the politics behind all of this, but I think what you need to know at home is that, you know, they'll be discussing topics that are important to you, whether that's spending large amounts of money on public safety in your community, that's going to be through the junior bill, or whether it's a direct cash payment or tax rebate to you to help with inflation, rising gas costs, that's the other side of this. So while there is a lot of politics behind it, these topics are probably going to be important to you at home.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's going to be an interesting day to hear. Just for anybody who's just joining us, thanks for being here for our live coverage of the special session here today. Lawmakers are expected to begin at nine o'clock. This is expected to be a one-day session. And just to give a little bit of a, just to give a little bit of a live look rather of what is happening inside the chambers of the Senate, I believe it is the Senate, excuse me, it is the House. They have started the session here and you can see and maybe listen in a little bit on what is actually going on.
... commonly known as the anti-donation clause, whereas carefully reassessing expenditures...
There you go, just some of the, some of the opening remarks that have to happen as the legislative session begins here.
They're going to work through some introductions and particularly that feed bill that we talked about, which will really fund the process that's going on today. So not a whole lot of debate there. It's really just saying, hey, this is the money we need to get approved, to pay for us being here in the roundhouse. So once they do that, they'll move on to the bigger weightier topics that we'll get into.
Yeah, well, let me just, I'm going to frame up our live picture here for our folks to be able to see in the monitor here, right in between us here. So now you're getting a live look of inside the legislative special session as the, as the debate begins, you could say. So let's talk about the debate. I know we've, we've talked a lot about of what's leading up into this, but let's get into the topics here. Let's start with the junior bill, the threat of an extraordinary, oh, would you, what do you know? The broadcast has actually ended apparently for lawmakers. So they are probably moving on over into one of the other meetings here and we'll select on it, put it back on the screen there. So this is, this is the way it works when you're looking at the live video feeds of the legislative session. They've got these cameras parked up far away, up in the gallery and we're kind of clicking and switching between some of the different chambers when they start and stop meetings as they begin their process here. So I mentioned getting to the discussion point of why we're here, starting with the junior bill. Again, I mentioned the, the threat of an extraordinary session. Lawmakers were pretty upset by this veto to a junior bill. So what is the junior bill, Curtis? This was Senate Bill 48 and it was worth several million dollars, right? Can you tell us a little bit more, what is the junior spending bill that people are hearing so much about?
Sure. Junior spending bill is a relatively large package of government money, tax money that is spent for government purposes. Now, back during the regular session, there were some really big, big in terms of monetary value bills that went through, including capital outlay, which is going to pay for things like roads and buildings across the state, the state budget, House Bill Two. This bill, the junior bill, is smaller by comparison. It was about $50.4 million, but it encompassed projects that didn't make it into those other larger spending packages, things like paying some extra salaries for courtroom staff or perhaps purchasing one vehicle for a police department in southeast New Mexico. These smaller projects that didn't make it into the larger bills that were passed were wrapped up into the junior bill. So generally speaking, local agencies will come to their legislators, the constituents will talk to the legislators and say, hey, we need this for maybe $100,000 to build a new library in our community or $50,000 for this new police truck. And the legislators will then submit all of those, they'll wrap it up into this bill, total it up, and then ultimately pass it. Now, they did pass this one unanimously, unanimously back in the session a month ago, but then the governor vetoed it. So overall, it's just another spending bill, but it encompasses all those small, but still important projects that didn't make it into the larger budget.
Yeah, and Curtis, I know you mentioned a few of these, you know, judicial funding is certainly there. I just wanted to look in and just kind of read folks a few of them. Let's just pick Luna County, $80,000 for a children's room museum and library in Deming. In McKinley County, $50,000 to purchase and equip law enforcement vehicles for Gallup. In, also in McKinley County, $50,000 to equip law enforcement vehicles as well. That's the same appropriation twice, so actually $100,000 when you add them together. $100,000 as well, $120,000 for a K-9 unit for the McKinley County Sheriff's Office. I mean, the list goes on. This bill is actually 73 pages worth of stuff.
And it's not, it's not just, you know, equipment and building purchases and payments. It's also providing services. There was a lot about mental health services or contracting with different businesses to provide those services to different communities. So it's services, it's vehicles, it's renovations, it's all sorts of these smaller projects that range kind of in the $50,000 to a couple hundred thousand dollar range. So we're not talking millions and millions for each individual project. They're kind of the smaller ones, but totaled up, there were about 500 different projects in the initial bill and that came to a grand sum of 50.4 million. So a significant amount for New Mexicans.
Right, $50 million worth of projects and that gets split as well evenly between the House and the Senate. Senate lawmakers, because there are fewer senators than there are House representatives, Senate lawmakers actually get to basically spend a larger share on portions if they choose to, you know, they could also pick more projects if they want to.
And it's worth asking, you know, is that a lot? Because a lot of the kind of political debate over this was, you know, whether or not this investment in New Mexico was the correct investment to make. The governor, in her veto message to the Senate, really said, you know, there's not enough transparency here. I am not convinced that this is the right investment for New Mexico. But if you look back last year, almost every year, there's some sort of junior bill. Last year's was even larger if you look at all the projects within. That's because a few projects were particularly large, such as 75 million for broadband across the state, another 100 million to repay some federal loans. So all told, the 2021 bill was larger than this year, but if you remove those, it's, it's around the same size if you remove those really large appropriations. But relatively speaking, this year was a bit bigger.
I did want to also get a little bit to what you had discussed there. You had mentioned the governor's concerns and why she vetoed this bill. And it was interesting that she vetoed this bill because of the fact that so many people voted for it. There actually wasn't a single dissenting vote against this bill. The only people who didn't vote for the bill were either excused or absent. So excused from the vote or absent. And so, yeah, it's, it's so peculiar in, in some sense to see a bill that has unanimous approval from all lawmakers, both sides of the aisle, especially as we know in a, in an era where there is a lot of division that exists in politics. It passes, but it reaches the governor's office and sure enough, it meets its death through veto.
You know, I think it passed because, as you mentioned, kind of everyone gets a share of it. It's not particularly partisan. Both sides of the aisle received money for projects that are important to the people in their districts. You know, you listed some of the projects. Those are obviously hard to argue with in terms of, are they going to benefit local people? So it passed unanimously and then, like you said, it was vetoed. And I think we have the quote here from the governor's veto message, which is literally just a letter that she sends to the Senate saying why she vetoed this bill. And she said, you know, despite its nickname as the junior bill, it is anything but junior. She wrote that it is littered with tens of millions of appropriations. Obviously, it's 50 million. Yet it circumvents the important budget and capital outlay process that forms the basis for other large appropriation bills. Fiscal responsibility is, must be a cornerstone principle, she wrote, both in boom times and in times of economic uncertainty. So really, she was kind of signaling that first off, it's maybe too much money. It is large, it is anything but junior, as she said. And then really, there seems to be a transparency issue that it's not quite fiscally responsible enough. And we've heard since then that the concern here is that names of the people requesting these funds are not attached to the funds. So while we know where the money would be going, we don't know exactly who was asking for that money. And it sounds like in the new version, we're going to see a little bit more transparency. That's one of the things they kind of worked through before the session, that legislators made a compromise on and said, maybe we can attach some names to this so that we meet that transparency requirement. The governor, on the other hand, in her side of compromise, said, you know, I'll probably sign, I'll probably approve something of about this amount as long as it is more transparent.
I want to get to as well, more comments here from the governor. She was asked in person by a journalist at a, an unrelated event. This was the ribbon cutting, or I should say, this, not necessarily a ribbon cutting, the announcement of a hydrogen hub locating in Albuquerque at the Sunport. And this happened on, this happened on March 10th. So it was a day after she wrote this veto message. And a journalist asked her, you know, what is behind your veto of the junior bill? We read your message, it's an interesting statement, but can you explain a little bit more about it? And I want to play you in her entirety, her response to the journalist about that veto. Here's the clip from, again, March 10th.
And I, again, I, with all due respect to my colleagues, and I appreciate that, you know, the, there's been reporting that I've had like the least amount of vetoes in, of I think, any other governor. I really work hard to get to yes. And that's been my commitment as governor to the citizens of New Mexico, that if you get it through the legislature, you got bipartisan support, you ought to work to get to yes. I want recurring programs to be built, delivered, and I want the stayability power of that for the state. They belong in the budget bill. It also creates better vehicles for state government to execute that work in a productive way. To both of your points, I don't know what the, what the background is for any of those appropriations. I don't know what the intent is, whether it really is recurring or not recurring, if it's one, it's very hard to really have a sense about that because I, I don't know. And lastly, most of the things, in my opinion, and there's a different set of opinions in House Bill Two Junior, are covered in House Bill Two, in the reoff, in the capital bill, in separate appropriations bills, or in current recurring appropriations that the department's already working on. And for, I'll give you another one. Or if we vetoed anywhere, any water or water infrastructures, because we're going to get federal money for that. That means more money for the other priorities when the legislature comes back into session. So I think it's okay to have disagreements about these issues, but that's the rationale. And I don't think it hurts to be more transparent about all of our appropriations, certainly.
Now a live picture from inside the roundhouse as the special session has begun. This is Representative Bill Ream of Albuquerque area. Listen in to what he's saying. Oh, he just passed the mic. Never mind.
I have introduced legislation previously to go ahead and follow what other states did with their recreational marijuana, that five nanograms would be considered per se, meaning point, well, it would be similar to point zero eight. Remember that they had to be under arrest for DWI to begin with. We saw in the news last week, reported on Channel Four, where they were talking about Colorado experienced 175% increase, 174% increase in marijuana impaired drivers after...
The junior bill is similar. It's hard to say because they don't provide a grand total. They don't show exactly which projects made it through and didn't make it through. But just like the first junior bill, it is a list of a lot of these smaller projects looking to be funded. So there may be some debate on that, but as we've heard before the special session started, you know, more or less, everyone was expecting this to go through fairly easily without too much debate. As we mentioned, it went through very... As we mentioned, it went through very easily the first time through the legislature. We expect something similar this time as well. So hard to say if there will be any amendments or changes, but looks like something similar will happen this time around.
I wanted to circle back to, because I realized at the very beginning, my comments, I had muted my mic until Curtis started talking. But essentially, what I was just saying was Bill Ream there was discussing cannabis. That is not a topic that will be highlighted in the discussion here today for lawmakers, focused solely on the junior bill and this cash payment bill. So this is what happens, though, when they gather lawmakers together. They want to talk about a lot of other things, and cannabis has certainly been in the news since last Friday, since recreational sales.
While they may want to talk about all sorts of topics, from cannabis to public safety, as you mentioned, Chris, because this is the governor's call, she has the say in what topics they can and can't address. So unless the governor sends a message to them saying, hey, I want you to consider, say cannabis, or hey, I want you to consider public safety, they're going to have to stay pretty focused on these main topics. That's not to say we're not going to hear them mention it a little bit, but they're not going to be able to do any real work on those topics outside of the governor's call.
Yeah, and a lot of times, that discussion comes in times like announcements, which is essentially right at the beginning of the session. You kind of give lawmakers a little bit of the floor, so to speak, to discuss whatever they may have on their mind. So getting back to the junior bill, I did want to, to just balance this out as well, to hear from some of the lawmakers that were upset by the fact that this junior bill got vetoed. We had a few lawmakers reacting to this on March 9th, and I wanted to play that sound for you here with a couple of the lawmakers that spoke in opposition to the veto.
It provides things like meals on wheels for seniors. These may not have be large ticket items. However, they're very important to those people that are impacted by them.
Legislators are the ones that are on the ground every single day in their communities, with their mayors, with their constituents, and they kind of know what the needs are. Needs from my junior appropriation were domestic violence, police cars.
There you have it, that being the sound from lawmakers who, after the junior bill, ended up getting vetoed by the governor. It looked like the reaction came pretty quickly. The two people you heard from there were Greg Baca of Berlin, Republican, who is also the House Minority Floor Leader, if I am correct. And then also, you have Senator George Munoz as well, who is the Senate Finance Committee Chair. So those two reacting from them both, again, Democrats and Republicans, not happy about that.
I think pretty much everyone was disappointed. Like we mentioned, this is funding for all parties, all people involved. But some people were really kind of outspoken in their response. It kind of got into the political weeds of all of this. But, you know, Representative Jim Townsend mentioned to us that he thought that the veto was what he called a petulant act, that it wasn't well thought out. He feels like the lawmakers really thought through this bill, went through the process that they go through every year, that there was nothing particularly egregious within this year's version. So he wasn't entirely sure why the governor vetoed it. Jacob Candelaria, Senator, also felt similar. He called it a temper tantrum from the governor. So definitely some inside politics in all of this. It is an election year, so the governor will be running for reelection later this year, and maybe that plays into it. We can get into that later. But we have heard some signaling that maybe that's why she has now been signaling that she will pass a new version of this bill. But there's definitely some politics behind it, but.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just wanted to say thanks for that explanation here on the junior bill. That is a, that we hopefully gave you a good rundown about what is happening here and, you know, what is expected today. But I think the long and short of it is lawmakers weren't happy. They were prepared to call us their own session, which the governor would have zero control of what gets heard or talked about. The governor called the special session. She controls the special session. She put the junior bill back on the docket, and it appears that that bill, with a few minimal changes, will pass here today. $50 million worth of projects, funding for groups, agencies across the state, is expected to be a part of it. The live look you're getting in the center of your screen right now is from the Senate as they begin matters related to this special session. The session, again, is only expected to last one day. Things began right around nine o'clock, and there are two topics, the junior bill, which we just explained, and also cash payments, which we will get to. They are expected to finish up here tonight. So Curtis, the other element of this, I mentioned cash payments, and we do want to get into that discussion because I think that this is one of the more interesting parts for a lot of people who stand to literally get free money from the state based on what it sounds like are record oil revenues. So this is going to be certainly where all the debate we think will happen today. But before we get into kind of what that debate is going to be, let's just talk about why we're here. Curtis, if you can kind of outline to me, what are the reasons for us talking about these economic relief payments, or lawmakers talking about these economic relief payments?
Well, it's no surprise to anyone listening, anyone who's been paying attention, to hear that prices are rising across the state, across the U.S. Gas prices in particular have been a big concern for a lot of people. Here at KRQE News 13, we've had a fair amount of coverage on that. They didn't quite reach their all-time high, but got pretty close when you account for inflation. You know, significant price increases for New Mexicans. And so really, this all started out as a discussion about how to address that. The lawmakers know that their constituents were feeling the sting from rising costs. And so they started out this discussion with how do we help with those rising gas prices? So as of February, if you remember, gas prices were about a dollar and 10 cents higher than the year before. And, you know, that's significant. Everyone was feeling that because a lot of us drive to work. We're a spread-out state, so gas in particular was a key concern here. But it's not just that. Almost everyone knows that prices are rising at the grocery store all around. So now they're kind of calling this a household relief payment. It kind of shifted from a gas-focused payment, but it's the same idea. The governor really wants it to be what she calls money in pockets. And I think you might even have a clip of her talking about that a day or two ago.
Yeah, yeah. Let's get to that sound where the governor was discussing what her take was on the reason for the special session, she said. Without totally talking too much about the controversy of the junior bill, this is what the governor said. She was at an uptown cannabis shop in Albuquerque. She was talking essentially to cannabis consumers as they were going through on the first day of sales. And she went into this kind of spiel about, you know, there's a special session coming up. Hey, do you know what it's about? Quizzing some of the people in the shop. And this was kind of her speech to constituents, so to speak, in the, in what appeared to be a pretty friendly environment for her. She didn't see anybody coming up to her disagreeing with her proposals or whatnot. So this is how the governor laid out what the special session is all about.
It's about getting money back in the hands of pockets of New Mexicans.
That's great.
So money in pockets, money in pockets. So we're going to spend a day figuring out ways to give you back the money that you've been giving us successfully so that we can invest in New Mexico. So I shouldn't tease about the legislature. I think we're going to come to easy agreement, and it'll be an easy day. So I'm thinking it'll look like this, a couple different rebates to help with gasoline costs in particular, make sure that we don't have any issues with schools and gasoline costs. I think that can come up. And we're going to put another $50 million, as long as they tell the Mexicans where their money's going. I'm okay with signing that, though.
So that being Governor Michelle Lujan-Gresham, as she was telling constituents inside an Albuquerque cannabis shop what the special session today is all about. And you're seeing that right in the center of your screen. That is Albuquerque Senator Mark Moore, who is leading some discussion right now, the announcements and miscellaneous part of the discussion here today. It appears Moore's just finished his statements there. But this will continue, and eventually the debate will get to those cash payments or the money in pockets, as the governor talked about.
So you just heard the governor's explanation of how she views that rebate or that money in pockets. But I want to give you a sense of how legislators are thinking about this because it's something that's important to them as well. This isn't just something the governor has asked for, it's something the legislators seemingly want to do. Brian Egoff explained yesterday that, you know, throughout the regular session, they made, the legislature made a lot of investments across New Mexico into education with raising teacher pay, into healthcare by funding more of the state's budget and by, you know, supporting businesses. And so this is really what they're considering, kind of continuation of that work of helping New Mexico economically and to stay economically robust. They know that a lot of that money went to big organizations, and some of it could trickle down into the normal person's pockets, but they want to be more direct with that to help with these rising costs. So the lawmakers themselves are really seeing this as a way to kind of benefit New Mexicans, using New Mexicans' money.
Let's get a listen into what some of these lawmakers are talking about right now as we're looking at live images. I'm going to unmute this feed here for a second, see what Senator Jeff Steinbauer of Las Cruces is talking about.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Steinbauer. Senator Woods.
Mr. President, I'd like to make note that Clayton High School girls won the state championship also, and I'd like to recognize them today.
Thank you, Senator Woods. Any further announcements? Seeing no further announcements. Senator Worth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unanimous consent, we go to that order of business, introduction of legislation.
We're on that order of business, introduction of legislation. The reader to read.
There you go, hearing some of the discussion, and congratulations to the Clayton High School girls as well, who won that state championship, as was discussed here just by one of the area lawmakers, getting some of that own personal announcement and things they wanted to share, so.
Sounds like they just made it through those announcements. Sometimes those can take quite a while, but again, they wanted to keep it brief, it looks like, so they made it through, and they're about ready to introduce some of the legislation. As we mentioned earlier, one of the first things we expect to see is the FEED bill, which is just going to kind of fund the process, pay for the folks there at the legislature to get through today. And then they'll likely introduce the more contentious stuff, that junior bill and the rebates.
Yeah, and so we were talking about the cash payments, a little bit more about these, and we did kind of make this breakdown for what Democratic lawmakers are proposing. So you can see this here on your screen now. $500 for single filers. This is under the Democratic proposal, again, that will get debated here today. $1,000 could be going out to people who file taxes jointly. And those payouts could come in two rounds under this proposal, right? Curtis, can you explain that?
Yeah, they mentioned yesterday that it would likely come in two payments, whether that's 250 and 250 for those single tax filers, or two $500 payments for joint filers. They'll likely come in the spring and the fall. And that's kind of seemingly either to spread out those payments and over time a little bit, or perhaps it's what Jim Townsend called an election solution. We mentioned that this is an election year. Michelle Lujan-Gresham will be running later this fall. So some people think that the timing of these payouts could be tied to garnering support for that party. But either way, it's looking like two payments split out throughout this year to provide some relief for New Mexicans.
Yeah, well, one of the things that is leading up to this proposal was the idea that lawmakers would actually send a lot less. Originally, one of the proposals that was out there was maybe 300 or $350 for single filer, single taxpaying filers, essentially, or tax filers, rather, if I'm struggling for the phrase here, 300 or $350 for those folks, and then maybe as much as 700 for joint filers. So when this proposal came out yesterday from Democratic lawmakers, it certainly was a lot more than had initially been forecast. But one of those things you wonder is whether or not that will hold up through debate. It seems that Democratic leadership is on board with that because they all came out in this news conference that happened yesterday with, you know, Speaker Brian E golfe was in there, the House Majority Floor Leader, Javier Martinez was in there, and several other key players in the Democratic leadership. But, so it seems that, you know, you could say Democrats, to some degree, are on board, but we do know that there are other Democrats who have key votes in sort of somewhat of swing districts, you could say. And we'll, I guess, have to see how things roll out in debate. Is that going to be too much, or are people going to demand, hey, let's pull back the rope here a little bit?
You know, I think key to that discussion is considering where this money is going to be coming from. If we go with the 500 to $1,000 total payments, that would bring the total cost of this package to somewhere around 700 million, is what they told us yesterday. That's a fair bit of money. So you got to consider how they came up with this. The Democratic leaders yesterday said that they came up with the payments by kind of looking at the average gas price that was seen throughout the state and the average amount of driving New Mexicans do, and kind of considering it as a rebate calculation for those gas prices. So based on the payments they're expected to give and the amount of gas prices, it's something like a rebate of 83 cents per gallon is how you could look at it, when they used estimation that the average New Mexican drives about 600 miles per year. So thinking about it as a kind of gas rebate, that's how the economics would play out. But that's a lot of money, no matter how you look at it. So we're considering where it's coming from. It's not entirely clear yet, but it sounds like it'll probably come from the Tax Reserve Fund. Now, if you remember, New Mexico taxes, it's called a severance tax, any oil, gas that's pulled out of the state's ground. And here in New Mexico, we're a fairly large oil-producing state, and the price of oil has kind of risen recently. So, as you know with gas prices.
Right.
So New Mexico has earned a lot of revenue from that. There's a fair bit of money in the government's pockets, in some of its accounts, and so lawmakers want to take some of that, give it back to the people. So if you look at one of the funds they're considering tapping for this would be the Tax Reserve, or it's also called the Rainy Day Fund. It has about $2 billion now. It fluctuates a little bit, but it's relatively full, so it's got a fair bit of money. It could certainly cover that 700 million without being completely drained.
You know, one of the things I think is an interesting point to note, you had mentioned, you know, the just how much New Mexicans drive, as we're looking at live pictures now, from the House side of things, as the Senate just wrapped up with some opening. Matters, I guess? Maybe that's the best word. You had mentioned New Mexicans drive a lot in this state. A fun fact that I learned from the back of a coffee mug when I first moved here, New Mexico's the fifth-largest state in terms of landmass in the country. So there is a lot that speaks to just how much New Mexicans drive when they're outside of, say, the Albuquerque metro area.
Yeah, and even within. I mean, you know, public transportation certainly exists here, but it's not, it's not the same as somewhere like New York where a lot of people don't have driver's licenses. And of course, in those more rural communities, you're going to have to commute to work, to school. A lot of people drive from Albuquerque to Santa Fe. You know, I think if you, like me, grew up here, you might take that for granted, but certainly a lot of driving happens in this state, and a lot of oil is produced here. But talking about the rising gas prices, how that affects our economy, a Legislative Finance Committee report, which really looks into the accounting of the state, said that $1 change in the annual average price of oil has an impact of about $30 million on the government's funds. So when the price of oil goes up, the government here stands to make a lot of money. And so they're hoping to take some of that, give it back to taxpayers in terms of these payments.
Yeah, well, and I wanted to get to some of the reaction to this proposal that exists so far. We did hear from both sides, not only the Democrats proposing this, but also we did hear from a prominent Republican in the House, Representative Jim Townsend, about this proposal. So I just want to start with the man who's in the center of the screen. Javier Martinez spoke a little bit about this in a news conference just yesterday. We will let you listen in on what Javier Martinez had to say about these direct cash payments.
I can tell you, in conversations with constituents across the district and even across the state, families are struggling to keep up with rising fuel costs. Too many families are having to make a choice between putting groceries on the table and paying for a full tank of gas to take their kid to Little League practice, to take their kid to a doctor's appointment, et cetera. That is simply not something that we are willing to stand and just watch happen. Now, clearly, these historically high fuel prices are part of a global phenomenon that we can't quite control ourselves here. But given the record revenues that New Mexico is seeing... But given the record revenues that New Mexico is seeing, we here on the House side, and I know the Senate, and I know the governor, have been working overtime. Chairwoman Chandler, Chairwoman Lindstrom have been working hard to make sure that we put a package together that will deliver that much-needed relief to working people across New Mexico. So we're excited and happy to be able to provide that relief, and we're looking forward to a robust and healthy debate over the next few hours and the next day or so.
A robust and healthy debate is certainly what we're expecting here today. I mentioned, we also have sound from the other side of the aisle, the Republicans reacting to this proposal yesterday. Representative Jim Townsend, he is the House Minority Floor Leader. He also spoke to K R Q E News 13, and I want to play a little bit of the reaction he had towards this proposal just yesterday. Here we go.
Well, it comes from the taxpayers, and that's what I'm supportive of, is we're returning the money to the people's, we're returning the people's money to the people. And I believe it will probably come out of two reserve accounts, either tax or what we call the Larry Naga or Rainy Day Fund. Both have about, just shy of $2 billion in them, and that's where it'll come from. The timing when they are paid, because May and October, of course, are right before two election cycles, then that's got a few people concerned. And who gets it? Is it every resident of New Mexico? Is it only taxpayers? Is it taxpayers of record? Just exactly, do you have to be a resident? Do you have to be, have legal status in order to get it? There'll be a lot of questions on that, and we'll go through that tomorrow.
Yes.
Sorry, we muted our microphones here just for the last few minutes, but you just heard from Jim Townsend. He was talking about income limits. And now it's a chance for us to talk a little bit more about this because I know, Curtis, you had said the bill has been put online, so you can see a little bit more about where the money's coming from, who's going to get it, and if there are income limits, right?
An initial version of the bill has been uploaded to the website. It's kind of hard to find right now on their website. It's buried in the files, but it is up there on the legislature's website. But yeah, you know, you heard Jim Townsend ask if there was going to be some limitations on this money. Is everyone going to get a piece of this, or are there some kind of requirements for residency status? Do you have to be a tax filer? We heard Representative Christine Chandler address some of that yesterday with the other Democratic leaders. She said that there would be a provision for non-tax filers, because generally speaking, a lot of seniors and particularly low-income folks sometimes aren't tax filers. They don't have the income, or for whatever reason, can't file those documents. So she said that there would be something in this bill to address those folks and make sure they can get payments as well. And it looks like in the first version of the bill uploaded here, again, it's possible that it will change with amendments and discussion, but there is a provision on this bill of about $20 million given to folks that don't file taxes, that wouldn't otherwise be eligible for those two payments that we talked about earlier, to come and apply. They would have to be at least 18 years of age during 2021, and they will have to fill out an application with the department, I believe that's Department of Health and Human Services, to get some of this money. And it is a first-come, first-served basis. So for folks that aren't eligible for the other payments we talked about, of course, if you do get those two payments that we talked about earlier, either 500 or $1,000 total, you would not be eligible for this through the application process. This is really just for folks that don't file their taxes, that wouldn't otherwise be eligible. I don't see any sort of residency requirements on this bill, but that certainly could be up for debate, that could be tacked on later.
Yeah. And just to give people a look, this is the bill you're looking at, right? House Bill 2. Essentially, it is up online right now on nmlegis.gov. It is a six-page bill, and you can see all the text of the bill there outlining the different payout amounts. And you can see $500 for heads of households, surviving spouses, married individuals, and joint filers. $250 for single individuals and married individuals filing separate returns. The second tax rebate shall be made between, that was for the first, I should say, second rebate being filed between September 1st and the 30th. $500 for the heads of households, again, surviving spouses, married individuals filing joint returns, and $250 for single individuals, married individuals filing separate returns. So this is kind of, yeah, exactly what you were just reading, Curtis.
And I might have misspoke a little bit. I said it's certainly up for debate, that is true, but it looks like there is some sort of residency requirement on those non-tax filers. It looks like, according to the language currently in the draft of the bill, that they would have to provide a social security number or a taxpayer identification number. They'd have to have some sort of documentation, of course, and fill out these forms. You can't just walk up from the street, provide no proof of who you are, and then receive this money as it's written. But all of that is subject to change. But that being said, it looks like there are some provisions for folks that don't file taxes to be able to get some of these payments.
And I think that is going to be key towards this debate here today, is whether or not Republicans are on board with that. And the reason why I single out Republicans there is because they are in the minority. They don't control the House, they don't control the Senate. All of the leadership that is in control is Democratic. And so they wrote the bill after the governor called a session. So there is a good chance that it's essentially kind of a done deal for most Democrats. I mean, we will see in the debate today, but you can always get a sense that going into these things, that there's been a lot of wheels turning, planning behind the scenes. I mean, even as Javier Martinez alluded to just a little bit earlier in our soundbite that we played, is that, you know, the working hard behind the scenes to ensure that cash payments and help is coming to New Mexicans. So I think that's going to be kind of the key question here, is whether or not the rules on who's getting this and how they get it are going to be enough for the Republican lawmakers, and we'll have to see here in the debate. And I should mention here as well that we are currently looking at a live picture of the House Appropriations and Finance Committee as they are just meeting up here. I can turn on their audio here, and we'll hear just a little bit of this. This is Javier Martinez you'll hear shortly. It's muted for you right now, we can hear it, but Javier Martinez, who is speaking right now to this House Legislative Finance Committee.
In many cases, in conjunction with some of the leadership staff on, in both chambers and in both parties, these include things like renovations to the annex, a reconfiguration of the L E S E office space, and then other upgrades and maintenance items, cameras, plumbing, et cetera. Like I said, that funding was vetoed in House Bill 2, and so we are reincorporating it into House Bill 1, in hopes that it passes, gets signed by the governor, and that our legislative council staff can move on with the work of taking care of our building. So with that, Madam Chair, as you indicated, Mr. Buciaaga, the Director of the Council Service is here as our expert witness, and we are happy to stand for questions.
Very well. Roll, would you like to make a comment?
Madam Chair, good morning. Good morning, members of the committee. I don't have any comment except to advise that I am here as a technical expert. I'm neither in favor of or opposition to House Bill 1, although that is what feeds the legislature, so I'm sure it's important.
You were hearing there some of the initial discussion happening right now in the New Mexico House related to the discussion that is happening related to these cash payments. Curtis, you were just mentioning as well that this is the first chance that we've gotten to see here about how much all of this is going to cost, right? The fiscal impact report has now been published here.
Yeah, we had some estimates from yesterday's meeting with Democratic leaders, but the Legislative Finance Committee, they look up reports on bills, they create these kind of fiscal impact estimates that give a broad sense of what each bill will cost, what the impacts are, if there are any kind of economic or tax issues related that the lawmakers need to work out. And the first one for this rebate payment bill has been uploaded. So they're estimating that it'll cost about 677 million, split across the fiscal year of 2022 and 2023. That money would be specifically from the general fund revenues. But they do talk about this, you know, whether or not this will be economic, significant economic relief. Certainly, money in pockets seems like it ought to help New Mexicans, but, you know, the large-scale macroeconomics of all this can be a little more complicated, so you can dive into that if you want. But they do mention the Taxation and Revenue Department has a quote in here saying that economic theory does suggest that a well-timed, temporary, targeted fiscal stimulus, which is what we're talking about here, right? These direct payments, they can raise economic output and income in the short run while still being kind of low-cost in the long run. So there certainly is some potential for good economic impact from these payments. One thing that still is kind of up for debate is the exact amount, although it's, we mentioned, it could be 500 for individual, individual filers, 1,000 for joint filers. You know, Representative Jim Townsend had signaled to us beforehand that, you know, is that really going to be enough for the kind of boost we want to give New Mexico? So it's possible that lawmakers will talk a little bit about adjusting the exact amounts, and there's certainly some politics behind that as well. But however you look at it, it looks like it's going to provide at least some boost to New Mexico's economy if this bill goes through.
Yeah. Well, one of the other things that we should mention is that this, you know, isn't the first time that economic stimulus payments have taken effect here. Back in 2008, right, this, there was some, some efforts from Governor, then Governor, Bill Richardson to do this. 2008, I was first year out of college, for those who are counting, so I hadn't lived in New Mexico here. Perhaps New Mexicans watching this now, they may remember this, but Curtis, we were talking a little bit about this yesterday. Governor Richardson's payments paled in comparison to the ones that are being proposed here today.
Yeah. And I certainly don't remember this. I was young and in school at the time, but I think my parents might remember getting these payments, but they were pretty small compared to what we're talking about today. At the time, it was another special session, again, like you said, back in 2008. Governor Bill Richardson wanted to provide some taxpayer relief, so he passed a bill that the lawmakers had put together, saying that people who made under $70,000 a year got up to $100 for joint filers. And again, today, we're talking about possibly $1,000 for joint filers. So the bill back then paled in comparison to now. Individual filers back then would have gotten $50 per dependent, so there was this additional payment on top for children, for having dependents on your taxpayer. But even with that, if you had a couple of kids and it were a joint filer, you're still nowhere close to getting the $1,000 that we're talking about today. So it has been done before, but a little bit bigger scale today.
And actually, you know, what's interesting to note back then as well was in 2008, gas prices in New Mexico as well, well, they certainly weren't as high as they, as they are now. We do know that essentially in 2008, they were at record levels, I guess, at that time. So it is interesting to hear the, the approach being so different this year compared to when you consider what happened in 2008. But it's also a different kind of budget year, perhaps, as well.
Yeah. If you account for inflation, those gas prices back then were even a little higher than they are today in real terms. Of course, things, as we know, have, costs have risen because of inflation, that changes things a little bit. But interesting to see history kind of repeating itself with some slight differences, some slight changes. So we'll have to see how it plays out.
Yeah. The longtime record, as we understand, was at 408 a gallon, and that was in July 2008. So.
Which I believe is kind of approaching $5 if you account for inflation. I don't have the exact numbers, but.
Right.
If I remember correctly, it's something like that.
Incredible. Yeah, it certainly costs a lot to fill up these days, and I know unless you drive an electric car, people are feeling it, feeling the punch there. So I think that that kind of covers it here in terms of what we're expecting on the cash payments. But let's just, you know, if you're just joining us and wondering, again, what's going on? Lawmakers in the center of your screen there, and these are House lawmakers inside a finance committee there right now, debating, beginning to discuss what is the key item of this special session related to cash payments, of course, that could go out and hit your pocket, your wallet, your purse, whatever device you carry your money in, could be very soon. Again, on the screen, the proposal, $500 for people filing as single filing taxpayers, $1,000 for joint filers altogether. But those payouts would be in two rounds, and so you would take that number you see above on the first two lines there, split it in half. Payment one, half of the 500, so 250 for payment one for single filers, 250 for payment two. Payment one would go out in the springtime, so relatively soon here. Also, payment two would go out in the fall. One thing we did not mention, and we should get to, perhaps I'm not recalling if you did mention this, Curtis, so I apologize if I missed.
It's always worth a second mention.
Yeah, but, but the existing rebate that, that New Mexicans already have coming their way. You see, I wrote that line in there, in addition to other rebates.
That's right.
So back in the regular session, this was kind of one of those squirrely little pieces of legislation that worked its way into a bill on the very last day and passed. That was a tax rebate. And how did that break down, Curtis? Can you give me some idea?
Yes.
People are already going to see some money coming back to them, regardless of what happens today.
It did kind of sneak in, so I think unless you're really paying attention, it was easy to miss. It was in a kind of laundry list of other tax changes and adjustments. But in House Bill 163, they did provide some tax relief. It was really a tax credit or rebate. That gave married individuals filing separately a $250 tax rebate if they made less than $75,000 a year. Married or joint filers were eligible for a $500 rebate if they made less than $150,000 a year. So, you know, $250 to $500 tax rebate, again, that is for taxpayers, that would be kind of taken off your total tax bill at the end of the year. That was kind of snuck in there, easy to miss, but nonetheless, has, has an impact on when you're filing your taxes. It certainly every bit helps. So this is kind of in addition to what we're talking about today. That stuff is already coming through in the pipeline. That is done and finalized, that $250 to $500 tax rebate. But now the legislators are going to be talking about additional payments on top of that.
And that rebate, actually, it will go out in the form of a check in July, as we understand. It'll be distributed in July. So you do have to file taxes. So in some ways, Curtis, like what you're saying, is you file, it'll come off of your tax bill, but you kind of get the credit in July in the form of cash, essentially.
And there's also, there was also a child tax credit that will start in 2023, I believe it is. That's up to $175 per child. So there are a lot of these kind of smaller amount tax credits and small rebates that do go through, that a lot of people will be eligible for, but certainly not everyone has a child, of course. So lawmakers wanted to kind of break out in this special session, a new rebate that'll kind of address everyone, address the big-picture concerns of rising costs, rising inflation, rising gas prices, in addition to the little things that make it through each legislative session.
I did want to highlight this thing as well. If, if this passes as proposed, you know, the question of when would you see the tax rebate? It's there, I'm going to highlight it here. The first tax rebate shall be made as soon as possible, but no later than June 30th, 2022, if today's legislation passes. So no later than June 30th. So let's just say if all of these, if the rebate bill passes as it is today, and you factor in the one that passed in the last session, you've got two different rebate bills. essentially with that in mind, and three payments amongst those two bills. So the payments, the schedule of payments would essentially be no later than June 30th, sometime in July, and then potentially in September. That's how those would all roll out. So essentially, you're looking at in the next five months, single filers could earn up to essentially, what is it, $750 with all the rebates in mind? And then joint filers could earn up to $1,500 if they meet all the qualifications for both rebates. But again, the one that just passed, or I should say, the one that's in consideration today is no, would have no income limits or calculations on it, the one potentially that, that lawmakers are considering today. But the one that did pass in the regular session is $75,000 adjusted gross income, so that's your income after those pre-tax sort of withholdings are factored out, and then the joint filers would, would be up to $150,000. So, yeah. Well, Curtis, I hope people feel informed a little bit about our discussion here. Sometimes it just feels like two news guys talking, but we didn't get any tweets from y'all, but we do always encourage you when we do these kinds of live streams to get involved in the conversation if you have any questions. You can always email us after the fact when we're offline. I'm krista.mckee@krqe.com. Curtis, you are online as well. Why don't you give your email and tell other folks about what you write about as well?
Curtis Segarra, that last name's kind of tricky to spell, so that's S-E-G-A-R-R-A at krqe.com. And yeah, continue to watch on the, look on the website, we'll be posting new articles related to this session and a lot of other topics. You can follow me, I'll be covering the cannabis industry as it continues here in New Mexico, not directly related to this special session, but of course, related to the economics of the state. We'll be covering the special session, lots of other topics that unfold in the coming days, weeks, months, years.
And I did want to put up my favorite graphic of the day. This is Curtis's byline, this is where you can check out all of his work, krqe.com/author/curtis-segara. Curtis does a lot of great work, very detailed and thorough for our krqe.com. We try to do things digital first with you in mind, that you're always watching news and keeping an eye out for what's happening, so you don't always have to wait for the newscasts anymore, just go online. We're publishing things exclusively online there as well with a lot of these stories, and Curtis is very central to that. So thanks for being here, we appreciate it. I think we will just maybe leave people with what else lawmakers expect to consider here today. There's one quick note I did want to put in. The governor said, "The legislature will also consider a measure to cut rail runner ticket costs for the next several months to provide an affordable option to commuters as gas prices remain high." And I know here at KRQE, we also did report some of the rail runner sort of ridership figures have actually increased since there. So a lot of times, this is for years with rail runner, folks have been saying is that when gas prices go up, we'll see more people riding the rail runner, and it seems that that is happening maybe perhaps a little bit here at this point. So along with the junior bill redo, which we covered a little bit in our first half hour, the direct cash payments to folks, rail runner options here on the line. Curtis, anything else you want to leave people with as they meander through the special session in Santa Fe too?
I think you pretty much covered it all. It's easy to get lost in the politics or the details of these bills, but it's important to remember that these are things that are going to be impacting you in your everyday life, whether that's, you know, new funds for public safety, or a new library in your community through the junior bill, or whether it's a direct cash payment or tax rebate to you when you file. So one way or another, it's probably going to impact you, so it's worth paying attention to the issues. You can keep following our coverage on our website and on our TV newscasts.
Indeed, and we will put through here some of the lawmakers, what they're actually discussing here right now, so you can listen in a little bit as we end our live coverage here. Lawmakers continuing here in Santa Fe, so here's a listen, well, at some of the, some of the discussion that's happening, you'll hear some audio issue just slightly with their microphones that seems to be easing up a little bit.
I don't think you're going to get anything less than $250 a square foot for some of those renovation costs. Building something new is 350,000, excuse me, 350 per square foot and up, and again, that's just a general overview. So it's just going to depend on the size.
That is a little bit too much for me. That is audio issues you get here from the live stream here in Santa Fe.
Sounds like they're talking about some of the costs behind some of the projects in the junior bill. Again, those are going to be smaller projects that didn't get wrapped up into the larger funding that was in different bills about a month ago. So, you know, building costs, renovation costs, projects around 50 to a couple hundred thousand dollars, but not the multimillion-dollar projects, but still significant. So they're going to be working through some of those costs and deciding what's worth doing, what's worth not doing.
All right. Well, thank you again for joining us here on krqe.com. We appreciate this. Hope you learned a little bit of something about what's happening in the special session today. We'll be continuing to cover it here. Jessica Garate is at the Roundhouse with a photographer here working today, and we'll have full coverage on KRQE News 13 at 4:00 and 5:30 later here today. Thanks again.
Thank you.